This is a regularly called and convened Greer City Council meeting. We are meeting on May the 28th, 2024. Having called the meeting to order, I would like to ask if you would to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and then followed by an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come before you humbly today thanking you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, not the least of which is this calling to public service. And we thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. We pray that we'll be mindful of the needs of all of our citizens, whether or not that be housing, or food, or whatever it might be, that we would be mindful of all those things that affect our citizens as we consider the business that we are called here tonight. And we thank you for this opportunity to celebrate, to consider business, and to consider a new budget. I pray, Lord, that you would give us insight and understanding, that you would give us the vision that we need to create the city that is the light on the top of the hill. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Counsel, with that, then, let's go to the minutes of the council meeting of May 14th, 2024. Mr. Bettis filled in on that evening for us. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Need a motion.
We should. I'm out of practice. I'll entertain a...
I'll make that motion.
Maybe we ought to turn it back over to Mr. Bettis. Well, we'll need a motion.
I got it. Make a motion.
Motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. This evening, we have a special recognition, and I believe we are joined by some folks, the Riverside High School tennis team and their coach, Heather Gage. And so I am going to ask those that are here representing the Riverside High School Boys Tennis Team and their coaches, if they would, to join me up front, please.
And so this is a proclamation celebrating the Riverside High School Boys Tennis Team and their state championship season. This has been an excellent year for Riverside. We have had several teams that have appeared before us this past spring, and I actually believe we've also got a soccer team that won a championship, if I'm not mistaken. And I think it's had something to do with that as well. But we're here today to celebrate the Riverside High School Boys Tennis Team and their accomplishments. And this proclamation says, whereas the City of Greer is the premier city in South Carolina that will do work and raise a family, the home of BMW's only North American manufacturing facility, Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport, and the South Carolina inland port that from its very beginnings, known as the home of dedicated coaches, selfless athletes, and championship athletic programs, the Riverside High School Boys Tennis Team completed a historic season of excellence marked by an undefeated run throughout the region play in the playoffs without dropping a single line present. Whereas the Riverside High School Boys Team battled through their biggest challenges of the year in the state championship, going down 1-3 to the very beginning of the day and lost to in the state finals the previous year, only to come back to 3-3, needing to win a tiebreaker's doubles match to claim the title. Whereas only halfway through the championship deciding tiebreaker, and up in the match, the skies opened and the rain came, forcing an unbelievable two-day delay. Whereas the Riverside High School Boys Team, their coaches, staff, parents, friends, and supporters rallied together after a two-day delay, they won the 4A state championship, first boys tennis state title for Riverside High School since 1922. Therefore, I redenew the City of Greer along with the city council do hereby resolve that the members of the Riverside High School Boys 4A State Championship Tennis Team shall forever be recognized as the City of Greer champs, and that they will inspire every City of Greer resident to be the best version of themselves possible, and that they will always recognize the City of Greer as their home. Let's give these folks, all of them, a big round of applause.
Y'all can go ahead and slip out if you want to.
Y'all are all dressed up in the summer. If y'all want to leave, you can.
Who was the coach in 1922? Must have been '72.
Council, departmental reports are contained in your packet this evening. You'll have that information there if you have questions in regards to departmental reports. That can be gotten from department heads and/or the city administrator. Ms. Susan Howell joins us now for an update on our financial information.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll give you a brief summary as of April the 30th, 2024. Starting out with the general fund, the year-to-date revenue is $39,198,000. The total expenditures are $37,642,000, and that is 6% under budget. The cash balance in the general fund is $22,866,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $3,078,000, $79,000, which is 7% over budget. And the expenditures for the hospitality fund are $5,051,000, and the cash balance as of April the 30th is $583,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,606,000. The expenditures are $1,474,000, and the cash balance as of April the 30th for the stormwater fund was $3,129,000. And happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, floor is open for discussion. Questions, comments?
The general fund numbers look to be reasonably tight. You have any rationale for that?
Um...
As far as, you know, revenue versus expenditures, I don't remember it ever running quite that close.
Yes. Yes, that's what it looks this year. I don't think there's anything. We will... We do get the business license money from the municipal association. We don't get that until June, and that's a huge piece of it. So we should be getting a bigger, a higher number in revenue.
Makes sense. We pretty well got all our property tax money by now.
We get some that trickle in every month, but the majority of them, yes, we have received all that money.
Others? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's move to the administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Real quick, last Wednesday was International Building Safety Day, and we want to take the opportunity to highlight our folks in building and development standards. They are responsible for upholding the different building codes of Greer for all of our businesses, government buildings, homes and facilities. They really do a great job for the city to make sure that the structures that we're in are safe, and I think it's important that we recognize them on, of course, a week after their day, but thank them for all that they do. Reminder that the next farmer's market will be next Tuesday, and the Moonlight Movie Series in City Park begins on Thursday, the 6th of June. There'll be crafts and pre-show fun, which starts at 7:00, and the movie starts at sundown. There'll be concessions available for purchase, but see the city's website for a list of the movies and more details. And finally, counsel, next Tuesday night, June 4th, at 6:00 p.m., we will be hosting a council workshop to discuss the details of the budget at your pleasure. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Again, additional information is available from the administrator, as you might see fit. Counsel, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. Got a number before us this evening. We will look to some of our staff on some of these and fill whatever we can. At this point in time, they have to check on some of the others. The first one before us this evening is the Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission. Miles Nason has served on this commission for a number of years. His term expires 6/30/2024. Do we have any information in regards to Mr. Nason's ability to continue to serve or desire to serve?
Yes, sir. There's some information in the packet. The airport is recommending that he continue to serve it if it's at your pleasure.
From staff, it is reported that he has agreed to serve another term. I'll entertain a motion that he be received.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for any discussion or questions in that regard. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the Board of Architectural Review. We have two members whose terms going to expire on 6/30/2024. That would be Mr. Eddie Birch's term and Mr. Brandon Price's term. New information or information in regards to Board of Architectural Review?
Mr. Mayor, I spoke to Mr. Birch today, and he is more than willing to continue to serve, so that'll serve as my recommendation.
Anything to add to Mr. Birch's nomination here as we...
No, he expressed the same to us as well.
All right. Comes as a nomination. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments in regards to Mr. Birch's continued service on the Board of Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Mr. Brandon Price's term expires 6/30/2024 as well.
He would like to continue to serve if it's at your will.
From staff, then, it's recommended Mr. Price's term be renewed as well, too, on the Board of Architectural Review. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for any questions or discussion in that regard? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have, appears to be four. In regards to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have District 2, which is Ms. Nissan's term, which expires in 6/30/2024. District 4 would be Mike Norris's term, which will expire at the same time. William Crosby, who represents District 5, expires 6/30/2024, and Monica Reagan-Huey's term expires at the same time, 2024. Those four come before you this evening. Ms. Cotty, information in regards to those listed on our list that are approaching their end of their term?
Sure. I spoke to Councilmember Booker this morning, and he'd like to appoint Jeremiah McKee, a downtown business owner for District 2.
Yes, Mayor. I talked to Mr. Nielsen and thanked him for his opportunity and his service for the Board of Zoning Appeals. If needed, I can do a biographical sketch, but I'm recommending Jeremiah McKee, who is the grandson of Mr. Gregory, Gregory's Boutique, who lives at 102 Mills Avenue in the Greentown community. I spoke with him today, and he loved the opportunity to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Let's do these individually. This comes as a recommendation and as a nomination for Mr. McKee to begin a term after 6/30/2024 on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I need a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. District 4, Mike Norris?
He would like to continue to serve.
Comes from staff, is a recommendation that he would like to continue to serve as well. I will entertain a motion to receive that.
I also spoke to Mr. Norris. He shared the same sentiment, so I'd like to nominate Mike Norris to serve another term for, on BZA.
Comes as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion? Question? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Mr. Crosby serves District 5. Ms. Cotty?
Yes, Mr. Crosby would like to serve again as well.
Does this require that the person be in that district?
I don't believe so.
Because he's not in my district anymore. It's been shoved back.
We will verify.
We'll verify that.
Before he's reappointed.
Okay. All right.
Couple of these really don't have a very good attendance record on the meetings. I know they only have, they have 10, and I know they have conflicts, but yeah. Some of them only made half the meetings, and some made less than half the meetings.
Point well made.
People have conflicts, but you know, that's something I think should be taken into consideration when you accept the position.
How often does the Board of Zoning Appeals meet?
It depends. Last year, they met 10 times. This year, they have not met yet. So...
Is it an issue finding a quorum? Has it been an issue with 10 meetings to find a quorum?
We had, I believe, two last year that we did not have quorum.
Okay.
That corner's no longer in five?
Shoved back to Miller Street.
Miller Street.
Okay.
Tammy just let me know that the only qualification is a city resident. However, we will verify, in fact, that that is the case.
I believe we've had that discussion before. It's just the recommendation comes from the district, not, it does not have to reside in the district.
That makes sense, yeah. Mr. Bettis, would you like to hold this over until you've...
Well, it sounds like we're leaning toward it being okay. We can always go back and change it, I guess. I would like to go ahead and clean this up and nominate William Crosby for another term.
Comes as a nomination. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for any discussion or comments or questions at this point? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. And the at-large position, Monica Reagan-Huey, her term expires 6/30/2024. In regards to that, a conversation with her?
She did indicate this afternoon that she is interested in serving again, but I apologize, I hadn't gotten that information to you, so it's up to you if you want to hold or go ahead.
Floor is open for a nomination of Ms. Huey.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion?
You said she did want to serve again?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Questions?
On the members at large, are they just called in periodically, or are they supposed to be there forever meeting, or what's their...
Yes, they're just appointed by, I believe, the mayor.
Just an extra person to be at the meetings or something?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Would you let us know if you have issues having a quorum at these meetings? Because I do see what she's talking about. There is some, there are some gaps in attendance on this list.
I certainly will. We had trouble the beginning of last year, and then towards the end, after we reached out and asked if people would be wishing to resign, they started to come to more meetings. So, but I will certainly keep you updated.
Ms. Duncan, where are we, where are we at at this point?
You have a motion and a second for Ms. Huey.
Any further conversation in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, last one before us this evening is the Planning Commission. That's District 1. John Holland's term expires in 6/30/2024. You had a chance to talk to Mr. Holland, Mr. Airwood?
Yes, I've spoken, I've been speaking to John about a matter. He's not going to be returning to the Planning Commission. He has done us a fantastic job, and he has served as the chairman for the last, I don't know how long, but he does real well at managing the meetings and getting the city's message out. But he was chosen or asked to put his name in for the Greenville County Planning Commission, and they do things a little differently, and he had to go for interviews and things like that, and then he has accepted that. So he's gonna, he'll still be serving us, but, but through the county. So I have not found someone yet, and he'll be a difficult one to replace, but we'll get somebody.
Good. With that, then, I would ask that you and staff bring me information that we can certainly recognize appropriately his service in time, okay? I'd like to do that, and we'll figure out what the most appropriate way is, but if y'all will provide me that information, we will, we will acknowledge his service to the city. As you mentioned, he has, has been a good member of that, of that commission and served admirably as, as the commissioner. That comes as... Comes as a recommendation. Do I hear a second?
No.
We don't need to take any action.
No action.
Oh, there's no action on that. That's right. Excuse me. He is, he's leaving, so no action on that one. We'll wait on Mr. Airwood. With that, then, we will move to new business. Have a bid summary for the Needmore Recreation Center Flooring Replacement.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I would ask that this particular item be held over so the bidder can work through some licensing issues.
With that, then, let's move to the second item before us this evening, which is the first and final reading of Resolution 182024. This is a resolution, the City of Greer approving an intergovernmental agreement between Greenville County Sheriff's Office and the City of Greer Police Department. Chief joins us for that discussion.
Good, good evening, Mayor and counsel. Appreciate your, your time tonight. Bring forth to you a request on behalf of the police department to enter into a intergovernmental agreement with the Greenville County Sheriff's Office for the purposes of providing police services to the Mitsubishi polyester plant property on Hood Road here in the Greer community. So as you are well aware, Mitsubishi polyester has been a significant part of our Greer community. They partnered with us in many different ways over the years. We've had a public safety presence on that property with our fire service for many, many years. The parking lot that belongs to the, it's an overflow employee parking lot across the street from the plant is in the city and has been for many years. We've responded to calls at that location. However, the plant proper parcels, where the plant actually is positioned, and then there's a larger piece of wooded property that would be west of the plant, is not in the city. The City of Greer does surround the entire plant, and so with that, we wanted to find a way to continue our partnership and actually evolve that partnership with Mitsubishi polyester and offer that we can, with this agreement through the sheriff's office, it would allow the Greer PD to respond to calls for service on the property where the plant is located. So this, this would not remove jurisdiction from the sheriff's office. It would just offer concurrent jurisdiction where we would also be able to respond. We do believe that our response time would, would be greatly enhanced for them, and as again, they, they really are a part of our community and have been for a long time. I just think it's the best for continuity of service for us, as well as a better service for them or a faster service. We recommend that we enter into this agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. This comes as a, as a resolution. There will be action required on that. Floor is open for questions or discussions with the chief.
Chief, how did this come about, I guess? Did they request this? Was this...
So we, we, we've been dealing with traffic concerns for, out there on that road. They've worked with us in conjunction with trying to reduce some of the trucking issues that are clogging up the road, preventing their employees from accessing, you know, getting to work on time, be able to go away for their lunch break and returning on time. So we've worked through a lot of that with them, and we find ourselves literally in a tight partnership with them continuously. And additionally, I think there might be a future opportunity for us with our possible future training center to partner with them in another, in another way in the near future.
There is no compensation when we answer a county call here?
That's correct. It just, just as additional information, we've had, we've entered into the similar type agreements with Greenville Sheriff's Office. I believe it's Brook, Brookwood Drive right off of Wade Hampton. Part of that neighborhood is in the city, part of it's not. But again, for continuity of service, we, we entered into agreement to allow us to have police jurisdiction in that neighborhood. We did the same thing in Hampton Ridge subdivision on Red Shirt Court, I believe it is. It's a whole nother story how that happened, but part of that subdivision didn't get included into the city. And I think we had another similar situation back when Victor, the Victor Mill property, you know, there was a section that was in the city and part was not. So we've done these things in the past. It's not something that's out of practice. We have looked at the calls for service volume that could, that's definitely consideration for workload. So over a three-year period, we looked at how many times the sheriff's office responded to that, and it was a minimal amount. I think I have 13 or 14 calls for service over three years.
Mitsubishi?
Correct.
Does, does the county respond to any Greer city limits calls initially for us?
At that specific location?
Anywhere in the county, are they first responder for us?
They, they have jurisdiction, so they have what's called concurrent jurisdiction. So anything that's in Greenville County, it doesn't matter if it's in a city or not, they absolutely have jurisdiction. But I will say that the way law enforcement works, we generally push those calls off to whoever has primary jurisdiction. We want to have less calls rather than more. We want to have less calls rather than more, yeah.
So they're generally not responding to calls within the city limits?
Absolutely, that's correct. Yes.
For the purpose of action tonight, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions?
Is the 911 forwarded to our call center?
So if, if, if we were able to secure the agreement and enter into it, yes, we would send that information to E-911 and they would, they would repopulate the, the CAD system. Yes.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. First reading of ordinance number 23-2024. This is an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain property in the City of Greer and a memorandum of understanding between the City of Greer and Greer Relief and Resources Agency Incorporated. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, Greer Relief is now in their new facility in our facility over at Berry Avenue. As such, they are leasing the space from the city. This is both the ordinance that would recognize the lease between the city and Greer Relief and the concurrent memorandum of understanding, which outlines the terms further for the city. But this is not dissimilar to the, the previous lease in as much as the difference in this particular case is we have, we are ceasing the budgetary appropriation that we had in the past with Greer Relief. So this is a minimal dollar amount per year. It's a 30-year term with five years renewal automatically.
For the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second?
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
It really turned out nice. Yeah, I, I think they're, Carolina and all of them, I think they're really happy with where they're at. Makes a big difference in their, in their location.
Yes, ma'am.
Inside. Very nice.
Greer Relief will be responsible for upkeep?
Yes, sir.
Except maybe the roof, something like that?
Yeah, those, those major items, you know, the shell type things and, you know, part of the memorandum of understanding ensures that they are responsible for the appropriate capital fundraising initiatives to maintain the facility, furniture, fixtures, et cetera. Are they required to carry liability? They are and they have to list the city's additional insured. And also, I guess it would, coverage for their property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have anybody that checks on that on like an annual basis or?
To ensure that they are doing that?
Just to make sure that that policy stays in place?
We will make sure that that happens moving forward. Yes, sir.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel has moved the fourth item tonight, the first reading of ordinance number 24-24. This is an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain property in the City of Greer between the City of Greer and White Wine &amp; Butter Catering LLC. Mr. Watson, Assistant Director for Parks Tourism and Recreation, joins us this evening. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of counsel, we obtained proposals a couple of months ago from interested parties for restaurant services at Greer Golf. We have one proposal submitted from White Wine &amp; Butter Catering. Staff reviewed the information in their proposal, found that they're a highly regarded dining establishment in downtown Greer and we feel that their vision for food and beverage services at Greer Golf illustrate their commitment to success. Contract was reviewed and actually created by city staff and reviewed by our city attorney. And our recommendation is to move forward with awarding the contract to White Wine &amp; Butter.
Comes as a recommendation from staff. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Red, will they have a menu for like Sunday lunch? You know, at one point, there was a lot of folks coming out for lunch to the golf course. Are they, are they going to have that as well?
So the, we're asking them to be open when the golf course is open. And when they are open, we are asking them to have a golfer's menu, which is sort of cold sandwiches, hamburgers, hot dogs, those type items. And then outside of the golfer's menu, they have the liberty to offer whatever it is that they'd like to. So I'm sure what we've heard from them is that they want to offer what customers want. And when they open and get that feedback, I'm sure they'll sort of tailor that to what they're hearing from the customers.
I'm really excited about this. I think you guys have done a great job of making the golf course a golf destination over the last couple of years. It's going to be a dining destination just by the nature of Chef Mike and what he's already done in Greer and elsewhere, not just in the upstate, but in the state. So I'm very excited about this. This is great.
Totally agree.
How are they going to manage the, the kind of catering aspect versus just the average golfer that's coming out? Do they have kind of a plan to take care of them?
Menu-wise, I mean, they'll have the golfer's menu and we've, you know, we've, with them having to be open when the golf course is open, we're making sure that people that come onto site have a restaurant to sit down and eat with. However, they handle, handle their outside catering, it's sort of up to them as long as they're keeping the restaurant open to golfers and open to patrons that want to come and eat there.
I guess I, maybe I, when I said catering, I guess I was really thinking about like kind of events that are going to be hosted out there and just kind of keeping those, the events separate from just the ongoing golfers that are just, you know, looking to grab a drink at the turn or a sandwich or something like that.
Okay, I got you. So the contract does state that if there are concurring events while golf is going on, that they still have to keep open either like a service window or they can serve out of the cabana to, to the golfers while there's a private rental going on inside. So if we're open, they have to be able to serve golfers and, you know, if, if we have private rental, that's something we'd like to market using the cabana space and also the dining room. And we hope, you know, the more people out there, the better. But they will have to stay open to at least serve golfers or people on the property in one capacity or another, regardless of the events that's going on.
So speaking of marketing, how is that going to be handled? I mean, will we take a portion of, of the marketing in terms of the availability of the, the resources of the, of the course and events and different things like that while they also do some of, some of the marketing for just their services as well? How's that going to, how's that going to work?
So if approved, we have a marketing team that we pay separately for the golf course. We'll get our marketing team with the restaurant's marketing team and then everything will be one consistent message going out. But we will cross-market each other as far as menus or specials or rentals of the, of the spaces that we have and the pricing options. All of that will come together and look like one consistent message, whether it's coming out of the Greer Golf social media or whether it's coming out of White Wine &amp; Butter.
Do we anticipate it being table, or a table service in the dining room?
I believe so. That would sort of be an operational item for them. But the conversations we've had lead us to believe that that's the type of atmosphere they'd like to offer.
So is there any food available out there right now?
We have vending machines, but there's no food available because the, the clubhouse is still under construction.
I've had some complaints about that, that there's no food.
Be happy to take them.
Was that the only restaurant that applied?
Yes, ma'am. We, we had, sorry, it was not a mandatory pre-proposal meeting, but we offered a, a time for interested parties to come by. And there were three or four restaurants that showed up to that pre-proposal meeting, but only one submitted a proposal by the deadline.
Well, that's a good restaurant anyway.
Yep, we're excited.
Is Chef Mike still the owner?
He, that's who we've dealt with.
Yeah, he, he seems to do a good job. I've been to several events that he's hosted and he seems to really take care of people and have a good product and seems to keep people happy with his, with his food and service, so.
He has a background in, in a golf setting also, which is appealing to us. So it won't be the first time that, you know, that he and his staff have worked in that atmosphere and, and been in a golf setting.
Others? Comments?
So the, the income from this, from us will be the rent and what else? That's it?
They'll pay us monthly rent and then the cabana rental, which is where the pool used to be. That will be staffed and organized and taken by them, although we set the pricing. And then we'll receive 70% of all of the rentals from the, from the cabana also.
Do you have a, an anticipated start date on this?
I would expect 60 to 90 days after second reading if approved.
Others?
Plus business license, hospitality tax, all of that as well. They'll be collecting and submitting, correct?
Oh, sure. Yep, absolutely. Just like any other restaurant anywhere in the city would. Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate they'll seek an alcohol license?
Yes, sir. I do. That's part of the 90-day process. They may be able to do some things to get over and get open in other capacities before then. But yeah, the, I think that's about the, the time period for the ABL.
Comments?
This is a little off subject, but insurance, you know, there's a big problem with insurance and alcohol right now. I hope that's not a problem.
I do too. It hasn't came up in any of our conversations with them, but, you know, we keep hearing about other establishments closing down because of that. So they haven't expressed any, any reservations about being able to purchase it for that location.
First reading of ordinance 2024. Further comments? Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, last item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 25-2024. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2024-2025. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations there for levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mayorman.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you. In front of you is the line item budget that is the general fund and then all other funds in the, in the other packet. I have emailed you last week the dashboard overview of the budget. And as I mentioned in the administrator's report, we have, or will be scheduling formally for next Tuesday, a workshop, which is obviously a time that you can ask us any questions related to the budget. But as an overview here tonight for first reading, by way of reminder, what you're going to see is a Fund 11. Our general fund is a $51,689,039 fund, which is a overall increase of $2,001,001,000 over the prior year budget. We are recommending that the millage rate be set at 113 mills with the appropriate operating millage, infrastructure paving, millage included. What you're seeing is a bulk of this particular budget is an increase in personnel costs due to insurance premiums, adjusting salaries accordingly. We have in this budget a recommended 3% cost of living adjustment along with a 1% merit increase. This on top of the 1.5% that this council was gracious enough to grant in, for this fiscal year that we're currently in. We have added four additional employees in this, two grant-funded SRO position, an athletics assistant in Parks, Recreation, Tourism, and then a position in fleets dedicated to installing equipment and technology in our public safety vehicles. Obviously, you will, you are seeing an increase in the millage that reflects the 2024 Series A and 2024 Series B bonds that were passed by council in March of this year. Mr. Mayor, I can answer any questions. Staff is here to answer any questions pursuant to first reading of the budget. But obviously, you are going to need time to digest the line item expenditures that we have provided for you in advance of Tuesday night's workshop.
Thank you, sir. With that, Counsel, for the purpose of discussion or at least further discussion this evening with the information that has been provided, let's go ahead and entertain a motion to receive and a second. A motion to receive?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
This is a question that, that staff can provide answers at a workshop. But, and I mentioned this to you earlier, Mr. Mayorman, but I had spoken to David about it, but there's two funds that carries a pretty hefty balance that is unencumbered. That's the 2% hospitality number and then the stormwater number. What I need to know is how much is available or unencumbered out of those two funds? Because dollars from those funds can be applied to construction projects. And I don't see anybody here from engineering or stormwater. I, I know that we have and a project that we have to do. But then the next thing I keep hearing is that we've got all these projects planned and I've heard that for a very long time. And my opinion about that is I, I think it's too late to try to trump those projects in front of what I'm asking to do with those dollars, since they haven't been, apparently they weren't important enough to get them down and get preparations made. So if Tuesday I could have that information, that would be wonderful. And then the, the other item is, is just a way of thinking. If, and I, and I know that, 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 that staff has gone through and, you know, cut and cut and cut. And, and I, I would like for department heads, hopefully they'll all get the message because they're not all here. But in their preliminary budgets, they got things taken out. What they need to be able to tell me is, I, I want to know the why. Why have, why were you asking this? Why were you asking for these dollars? And then how, how, how is it going to impact this if, if you don't get them? But, you know, if, if you're, if you're asking for something just because, be honest and let, let me know. But we need to be asking ourselves during this time especially, why are we asking for certain things? And then how are we using this money and does it meet what we're trying to do?
Yes, sir.
That's my message.
Yes, sir.
Others?
Mr. Mayorman, I would anticipate next Tuesday is when we'll have a more expanded discussion around impact fees and finding the right mix from a philosophical standpoint and just the best approach from a revenue standpoint to do everything we're trying to do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Does this revenue include impact fees?
This does not include, this does not assume impact fees.
Now, the purpose of this tonight is just to say anything we would like to have checked out further or to ask a question about the?
This is first reading of your budget, Ms. Albert, so what, anything's fair game. Yes, ma'am.
Susan is here to answer every question that you've got in the deepest of details.
All right, okay. And, and you know, I may be a little off on some of this, but I, I guess one thing that caught my mind was the council budget. And looking at it, I saw that it increased from the actual 2321 by 75,000. And so, you know, I'm kind of wondering about why that big 75,000?
Where's your money, Sergeant? Where's your money? That's what he said.
Yeah. I might be missing out on something. And then, you know, so overboard for the total, it actually came out like 100. Well, not quite 100,000, but yeah, yeah, it did. It came out almost 100,000 over for the total. So just kind of wondering, you know, what, what was figured into those council and how those figures were incorporated?
David, was the salary?
Yeah.
Now, the salary was the same as last year. I mean, right?
It didn't take effect until this, this year. Is that this year?
Okay.
Yeah, after the election.
Yeah, but we're starting, that was the 2324 budget, right?
It would have, it would, it would have been assumed partially in the 2324.
It started in January of '24, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. And so then we're looking at '24 to '25, so we're looking at the next one. So I, I was just wondering, you know, about that 75,000 and overall 100,000.
I can, I can tell you where part of that is coming from as well, too. One of, one of the things that, that I'm finding that as we continue to grow, some of our dues, particularly the municipal associations, some of the associations that we belong to, some of the conferences that I attend and others are, the, the cost is based on the size of the municipality. And so we have, we have moved in some regards to a higher level of dues than we may have been over the last several years. I know particularly as, as we, as we have gotten to, you know, the 40 and, and 50,000 range as we, you know, as we look at that, we've, we've seen some increase in that for organizations that the city participates in and that I participate in, as well as a presence that, I know that, that there was one conference that, that the city participated in, that is an international conference that, that we try and keep in our budget. But I know there was, there was, there were some extra costs in that as well, too, that we'll want to continue to, to cover. So some of that is incidental to things that the city is doing through associations or that I am doing representing the city in, in terms of organizations and, and not as many trips as, as maybe in the past, but organizations as, as well. Now, a lot of that, and the bulk of it does come out of mine, but there are, there are some of those that the city actually signs up for. And so that's where, that, some of that, obviously not $50,000 worth, but some of that may be in that number as well, too.
And one thing I just wanted a clarification on was the parking services. What is that?
So as we build a new, as we build a new garage, as we have a garage, we, we've actually put the, put a line item in to allow for the, both revenue receiving and expenditures related specifically to parking as it will be a kind of a capital fund or a enterprise fund.
What are we anticipating on revenue for, you know, connected to construction and, and projects and different things like that? I would, I've been kind of looking at the building and development standards reports that have been coming out, and it, it looks like, you know, they've been trending off in the last, last year. And then it, it looks like that trend is going to continue to stay flat this year. And so there obviously won't be, it doesn't like as much activity. I mean, we even talked about that with VZA. They haven't even had a meeting this year. And I think the planning commission has reviewed a lot less cases. I mean, it's been, you know, only eight through April and I, I don't know. It, it doesn't seem like we're annexing as much property and there's not as much velocity on development. What are we doing to kind of absorb the, the slowing or?
Well, I think part of this year's budget demonstrates that, that slowing in a decrease in revenue in permits in particular. So that's effectively being absorbed to some degree by how tight this budget is this fiscal year. I will say that moving forward and having discussions with the development community, they are kind of pausing, but I, the demand is still there. So when other national economic indicators, I think, loosen up a little bit, we should see an increase in activity in this area. Some of the preliminary reports that we've had come in specific to the impact fees is still showing a substantial predictive number of houses that we anticipate moving in and around Greer. So while it was slow this year, I don't think that it's going to be like that forever. So we're just absorbing it this year through cuts.
Do we have any idea, I know we talked about the impact fee, and I know we'll talk more about that on Tuesday, but do we have any idea of how much that could potentially generate or, or how much we would be charging per unit? Or have we thought about anything?
Some of, some of the estimates right now for, for a single-family home are somewhere in that $5,000 per home range with 3,000, little, maybe 30, 3,300 for multifamily per unit is what can reasonably expected. You know, we could anticipate over a 10-year period somewhere between 14 to 20 million dollars in revenue, somewhere between two and three, maybe even more annually in revenue from impact fees. Now, of course, these are just predictive numbers based on a number of calculations done by the consultants that do this. But I think that I would, I would safely say that $3 million annually, based on their numbers, is, is right in that sweet spot.
Under the line item in general, the general government operations for street lighting, is that the amount? Is that the utility cost?
Yes.
And on the revenue side, have we had any further discussions with CPW about a fee?
We have not.
We really need to. I mean, we're budgeting over $600,000 to pay for lights.
That technically use much less current.
Yeah, that's right. You know, we switched out the LED, so we will tell them, you need to see the savings.
Yes, sir.
How many, I think I read in your letter, how many new positions have we approved in this, with this new budget?
This budget that we have got are recommending, recommending four new positions. Recreation assistant, parks and rec, two SRO positions that are grant-funded, and a position in our fleet division that will do technology for our public safety vehicles.
What was the ask by departments? I think Jay was kind of asking a similar question a minute ago, just?
From a position request standpoint in total numbers?
Yes, sir.
We had 51 total.
And this includes the tax increase of 14?
This, this budget includes the 14 minutes.
On the, this is just a general operating question, but with fleet services, how far, what is our intent with fleet services as far as maintenance and just the, the management of all of the equipment and, and vehicles that we have as far as, you know, who's going to work on them? I mean, are, are we still going to do simple things or do we see that ramping up? Have we even looked at?
No, I think we have looked at that and, and we, we see that ramping up. Obviously, there's going to be limits to what makes the, makes sense to have in-house versus what we would contract out. But the more that we can do in-house, and I think this particular fleet position represents that, while it's not mechanical per se, we were paying a lot to source out the installation of lights and radios, et cetera, in there. To bring that in-house, we see would be a, a savings. And so that is just one example of a continually growing and robust fleet service.
Are we literally doing that as far as costing and cost savings with other departments? And we've talked about this a lot before, it was the mechanization of some of the departments is very possible, which should, which should save on labor over time. You spend more on the equipment and then you save on, on the labor because the technology is doing more for you. Are we, are we in the process looking at that and asking for recommendations coming out of those departments? Is there anything that, that they can do within the departments to?
Sure, I can let Mike or Katrina jump in as they see fit, but generally speaking, the department heads are tasked and, you know, by and large are just, you know, the, the type A-type people that are always looking for better ways to do services within their department. So to answer your question, yes, if there's a better, faster, smarter way of doing things, specifically in your equipment-heavy departments like public services, et cetera, they're always looking for that. But there's always going to be a marriage of, of personnel and equipment. And, and so to divorce the two in, as far as the city government goes, is going to be, we'll be hard pressed to do it. But to your point, yeah, if we can, if there's a machine that can, you know, do all things, we're going to try and figure out how to get that, but we're going to have to have somebody operate it.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I guess?
And then maintain it.
And that's the big, that's the part of the whole study, not just saying how we can do. But can we hire an operator who's a true operator? And is, can we bring in this piece of equipment and how, you know? And the example I've used for you is, with you is that we have a tractor in our inventory and it's probably used two or three months out of the year. Well, there's, there's new platforms out there that take the place of just a tractor to mow the shoulders that, where we can change out the heads. And that's, that's simplistic, but that's what I'm, I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
And one other thing, I was just curious on this general fund overview revenue, the taxes. And I guess we're anticipating an increase of taxes of about 4 million? Is that, am I reading that correctly? A little over 4 million.
See, where are you? You are?
Let's see, what page is it? Page two of 29, is that it? General fund overview.
Yeah, that's about right. Yes, that is inclusive of the millage increase. Yes, ma'am.
Where does the, where does the debt service for the new projects fall under these expenses? Is that facilities budget? They don't? I understand.
The, the debt that we just issued is a beautiful head goal. It's a different debt arrangement. It is held with a separate fund, holds nothing but the debt. A budgeted fund is just a, just a fund that holds money. Debt service rolls only in future budgets. You will see debt service. Debt service is, there is, there's one debt service payment included.
So for so for revenue, the, the bonds, because I, I don't know if that I'm understanding that. Where we get this amount of money and it's not going into any particular fund. It's just held in an account until?
The debt service payment is due twice a year in the calendar year.
There's a construction fund and then separate debt service fund.
So the revenue is not showing the, an increased millage, is it?
Yes, that is major.
So we're showing increased millage in the revenue, but we're not showing expenditures?
The expenditure is shown.
Where are they? I just asked you if they were in there and you said no.
Answer. Public services in this budget. To rent, but then to test it out, possibly just kind of come in here and find out this.
So with the leaf vacuum?
Right now takes two people.
Right. Right. Well, and just to expand upon that thought is, can that piece of equipment do more than vacuum leaves? That's, so that, that, that's where I, I want to go with that kind of thinking.
Hey, you're looking at, you're just looking at?
Just looking at the first page summary. No, I'm looking at?
You're looking at the paper.
The summary that was handed out this evening.
That's the first page, this is the general.
So that entire number is what, is it? So with the increased millage, how much money are we taking in? In this budget? Just that millage?
Would be a total of, I'll tell you right here. Okay, so?
What's the value of a mill now?
238,982.
So we're showing the same amount of money as a, an expense? the same amount of money as a, an expense in that general government budget?
Because we don't collect it until inter years, is that why?
When we borrowed it, there are two debt payments that we make per year. First debt payment was included. And the seventh, we make in March, is what, following September payment. So the cash flow is coming in and out, that will cover that.
Could we maybe get that in a breakdown in black and white next week?
Sure.
See when, what goes where, when?
Is it a timing issue?
Yeah, I realize that now.
If debt service is coming in first, and then taxes come in, what, do we have two?
We have a thirty-year payment schedule. And this, and so the debt, or the, the revenue comes in at a different time than the payment schedule, so this allows us that timing from a cash flow perspective to ensure that we're making those timely debt payments. But we, we'll, we'll make sure that that's outlined clearly for you.
So it makes that next full payment in twenty-twenty-five, right?
Also, what would be nice to see is, we talked about different revenue sources with the athletic facility and different things like that, and the impact fees, you talked about those tonight. You, it would be great if we could kind of see a breakdown of different sources of revenue that could present themselves in the future and allow us to back the millage, back down closer to where it is now. I think it would, it'd be good to see what that looks like, too. I want to ask one more que, I would go back to this line of thinking we were going down a second ago, I was asking about the amount of positions that were requested versus the number that were approved, and I just, I know you said that I think it's because we, you know, have ambitious department heads, and they're looking to obviously grow and take on more responsibility and, and, and serve at a higher level. I know we recently had a shift in policy with flex time and different things like that. Is it possible that that is why the, maybe there wasn't asked for more positions?
Well, the, no, sir. The, the, the flex time policy is still, I'm working through that, and, but that's secondary. More, the, the increase in, in personnel is, is various reasons why from department to department. Generally speaking, though, I think that we need to get our hands around vacancies as much as anything before we really start adding personnel to the budget. And, and that's, as much as anything, from my, my perspective as the administrator, you know, we are seeking to provide a level of service, and we budget accord, to meet that level of service, but if we are not fully staffed, adding positions to the budget only increases the budget when we haven't filled those positions previously. So I think that's why this is very important in this particular budget, as we look at our existing personnel costs, but also what are we going to do to recruit and retain in order to fill the positions that are currently vacant? And I think that needs to be, as much as anything from a, from a, a management perspective, a goal for this fiscal year is to fill vacancies. No sense in adding positions and inflating the budget. We can't fill the ones we've been budgeting for.
Where have we been hovering from a vacancy standpoint through this budget year?
Through this budget year, I would say we're averaging, conservatively, twelve to fifteen percent personnel vacancies, conservatively.
Do we look at how that stacks with other cities in our era? You know, I know we do, Mike runs those competitive numbers a lot of times on millage rates and different things like that. Do we stack how, where we are on vacancies as far as maybe where Greenville is right now, or Spartanburg, just to make sure there's not some ti, I know there's, workforce is an issue for everybody, right? I get that.
We asked the consultant that we've been using for our personnel look, and I asked that very question, Mr. Davis, and they indicated that most municipalities and counties right now are around that ten, twelve percent vacancy rate, more in the environment. A lot of people trying to like catch up to attract talent, it's been, it's been difficult. Whereas, maybe five, six years ago, or ten years ago, it was probably more like about four to five percent of vacancy rate.
I went to the economic development meeting a few weeks ago, and it's a statewide problem. That was the number one issue that was brought up repeatedly by every agency that was, that was there. I mean, they just, they said that workforce is the number one challenge for, for industry and, and just employers in general.
Workf, workforce is always going to be that, because it is your biggest expense, and this is, it ties in with the budget, but not directly, but I think we have to do things differently, and we have to go through our, looking at our hiring process, how we select people and how people select us. I think that, you know, and, and we all know this, you just, you can never, if you start just competing on the paycheck, you don't win. And so we have to look at this from the ground up, and we, a, a new way right now to do business, and that is recruit those people, bring them in, like you do athletes, see if they're going to be a good fit for your organization. If they're not, we don't need bodies filling positions, because if you, if you've got three open positions and all you're looking for is a, and we put a body in there, that body won't last too long, and they're going to cost us money. So, you know, it's, it's a tough environment, but we've got to operate in it, and when we, and we've been very, the city has been very successful in being able to think through and find different ways to do things that's not normally done, and that's what we've got to do now. Not only, I, I think, I think our whole way we think, the way we budget, the way we hire, all of that, we've, we've got to, we've got to question every bit of it, and as, as far as hiring and maintaining folks, that needs, I think, some work, and, and we'll work through it. I mean, it's, that's just the way the economy is, and, but it, but, and, and then we'll find out how we can survive or get through this period of time with managing employees, and then it'll change, and then we'll have to change with it. But if, if all we're trying, if all we do is the same thing, we won't have any, we'll still be in that twelve to fifteen percent vacancy. Well, we've got to, you know, we, we have to do better if we expect to. We have to manage better if we expect to run better, so.
Counsel, first reading of the budget. Lots of good questions, comments. We've gotten some feedback from staff, information to be provided by staff. Let, this is, this is a lot to absorb, obviously, in, in, in the time that we can allocate this evening. We have a workshop that'll be coming up. What additional questions, comments, discussion might there be tonight that would, to help you focus in on something and/or require more information for you to consider?
Mr. Mayor, I've, I've made no secret of my dislike of the millage increase. I just can't ever believe that with, with nineteen percent inflation that we're going, that we have gone through, and overall about two percent decrease in salary, Greenville County is pushing for a, not a one cent tax, I don't want to mislabel it like they are, one percent sales tax, like Spartanburg mislabeled it and got theirs, that's a one percent tax, and of course, the school district maxes out every year. This is, this additional burden, I'd be interested to hear from my constituents if they mind paying more taxes, and if they're getting their money's worth. That's what I like to hear.
Valid, others?
Have we figured a household number for hundred thousand assessed, or do we, we normally have a number as far as what, how that's connected to the millage increase?
Specific to what would that burden be?
Yeah, you had that in the letter.
Yeah, fourteen mills is, boils down to a fifty-six dollar annual increase per hundred, which is four dollars and sixty-seven cents per month.
That was for a hundred thousand dollar, huh?
Of assessed, not market, assessed value.
One thing that'll help me, because now I'm a little more confused, was before I was under the impression that the millage increase would go towards more for the projects, but at first, he, he said that there wasn't any millage in this budget, but then, now I'm confused, is there or isn't there? So if we could clarify, is the millage increase almost like that silo that we're, we were saying, referring to before, going towards the project more or less than in?
We'll make sure that's clarified at the workshop, but just, yes, sir, just philosophically speaking, it is siloed.
Yeah.
There's an accounting function that complicates things to, through no fault of the science of accounting, but that's kind of where the confusion lies. But the, the fourteen mills is dedicated for debt service for the thirty years of the twenty-twenty-four Series A and Bs.
Okay.
So we will make sure that that's clear Tuesday night.
Okay. I don't want to mischaracterize that.
Fair enough, fair enough.
To our constituents.
So with that, counsel, I think we are drawing nigh to, at least a decision. We have first reading before us this evening of the City of Greer budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. This is the ordinance relating to the physical affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations, therefore levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. While there is obviously some disagreement about how we've gotten to where we are and where we're going from here, I feel like there is probably some agreement as well, and we have to have a place to start, and if it is a failed vote on the first reading, then we know that we have not found the place that we need to, to start this discussion in earnest, and so before I call the question on the first reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four, I'll open the floor up for any discussion, questions, or comments anybody would like to make.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just simply say, that's what I see tonight as, is just a place to start. I look forward to more in-depth discussion next week, and then a second reading as well. Mr. Arrowood, Mr. Betis' comments, you know, certainly resonate with me, and I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that anytime we even consider something such as raising millage, that we are making sure that we are providing value, and, you know, there's certain conditions that I want to make sure we put in place, that if we do go this route, that we're, we're doing the right thing over the long term as well as the short term as well.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
No.
Ms. Alper?
Due to the fact that I voted against a hundred million in the first place, with it, I wanted it downsized a little bit there, I'll vote no on the budget.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no other items before us this evening. We stand adjourned.